For the Fledgling Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me do roll call. Sandy Kufold.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson is excellent excuse. He's a little under the weather tonight. Cindy Valentine here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Do we have anyone that would like to make a motion to chair the meeting this evening in the absence of the supervisor?
I'll make a motion that we have Chris O'Regan chair the meeting.
Support.
Love to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm looking at our agenda. It looks like we have went to amend the agenda.
We'll make that motion to amend the agenda.
Support.
And new business number three, police, new vehicle equipment.
So we have motion and pre and post support. Okay, all in fitner, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Next, we have bills payable in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Any discussions on bills payable? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufold.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay. Motion approved. Next, we have the supervisors report. So our supervisor, Artie Bryson, is under the weather as a lot of our area are right now. Seems to be a lot of respiratory issues going on. I will try and recapture what he's left us as far as notes. First order of business is the high water report. Current status, the water level was dropping this past week or so. But last weekend, we got a lot of rain coupled with the southwest winds on Monday. The water spiked up eight inches and is holding at five hundred and seventy-seven feet above sea level. Anchor Bay Drive and a few other roads were underwater for a while. Now it is still holding around five seventy-seven above sea level, losing two inches that we saw earlier this week. Was asked if the township was going to sell water diversion tubes again. They are available online, working to get someone, distributorship in the area to sell them. I do not think the township should interfere with private enterprise. So when we say online, can they get a link from our website?
We could probably add a link. Yes.
Cool. All right. Second order on Artie's to-do list was asked, oh, I'm sorry. Looking for the sewer interceptor report from OHM. So the last meeting, board, specifically Sandy and Cindy, we gave, oh, I'm sorry, this is two separate issues, right? The sewer interceptor report from OHM is progress report, correct?
Yep.
And we don't have anything at this point?
I haven't seen any.
Mark, have you seen anything from them? Okay. Third order, I have had four people express interest in serving on the HITA board, the HITA board. I'm trying to verify if the authority still exists or not. I could not find any documentation with the state of Michigan, Michigan Secretary of State, Michigan LARA, or the federal government as to their existence. I asked to get an opinion from the township attorney to see if the authority does in fact exist. Do not want to appoint someone to an authority that does not exist. If this is in place, I think the first order of business is to look at their bylaws, articles of incorporation, and set a mission statement and goals.
Could you make a clarification to what HITA board is?
Yes, it is the Harsons Island Transportation Authority.
Yeah, just for the TV land.
And part of that is to help and assist with oversight as far as transportation onto and off the island, including the ferry. We had Mr. Newman, a resident, and a few other people in here at our last meeting expressing some concern about township oversight onto the ferry, the ferry transportation service. Artie expressed what our role was as a township, and I know there's a little disappointment as we didn't have more oversight. So this is certainly a step in the right direction. So we will keep our foot on the throttle and check with the height of progress. County water line extension is done. I believe everything on the punch list has been completed. Just going back through the change orders and charge backs before we make the final payment. So the residents of Colony Drive, if there's any issues that we need to be aware of, you need to let us know quick, please. There is a rental home in the township where the house does not have a furnace. We sent them an eviction notice or fix it. To my dismay, found out that under our current ordinance, we cannot enforce it because the house had a fireplace and using space heaters. In my mind, it is a real safety issue. We need to address this either with the property management standards ordinance or rental inspection ordinance. I'll have some input on that later on during the week. Mark, take it away.
No, not right now.
Later on in the week?
Depending on the, I don't know where this home is, but depending on the home itself, if it's deemed marketable, then that's another issue for that home. But if it isn't deemed marketable, then that's where this comes in at.
Gotcha. So they have a fireplace. And they're using space heaters. So I don't, no decisions are going to come out of this meeting tonight, but something I guess we'll have to think about as a board and.
I don't know if the roof is caving in, if the windows are out of it, you know, I don't know.
The other determining factors, huh?
I'm sure one of our building officials has filed a report on it, right?
Gotcha. Let's start that one. Let's check on it. Two more orders of business. Ordered two police cars way back last spring. Due to backlog of Fords, we will not get delivery for three to four months. Once we get delivery confirmation, we'll bring it before the board. Is a budgeted item, but usually we take care of this in August.
That should be corrected. That should be three police cars.
Three police cars. So this has been a topic of discussion for the board now. This is probably the fourth time in the last 12 months we've had discussion on this. I see we did put it as an agenda item, so we're going to circle back around to this in a few minutes when we get down to Chief Coach's report.
Do we have the original purchase orders on those? Do I have the original purchase orders on those two cars we can look at?
Three cars, but no, that's why we haven't officially approved them yet because we don't have the actual purchase order case yet.
Oh, okay.
They haven't been built yet.
There's some more information that surfaced, Mark, and we're going to let the chief enlighten us and the residents on that in a couple of minutes, okay?
Okay.
And then we can ask him some more questions as well. The township's doing a great job keeping up at our website, and there's a lot of rec programs on there. So if you like us on Facebook, like us on the Township Parks and Rec, or you can call our building department for more details on any of the programs we have going on. That is the supervisor's report, perhaps the shortest you will ever hear.
Nice job, Chris.
I tried to stretch it all for you, Chris.
Our next order of business, we would like to open up the floor for public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? Please, sir, come on up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Paul Opsmer, seven nine two, Windin River Drive, Williamson, Michigan. A little bit away from home. I serve as governmental relations director for Matthew Maroon. I attended your one public meeting you had just before Christmas. I wanted to introduce myself. Left you a business card. If you'd like to touch base with me, I'd be glad to help out. We would like to be a part of the solution that may involve us. It may not involve us. I had the opportunity in my past life to serve on city council in Duwitt. Served as mayor for three terms in Duwitt. We put together Parks and Rec Authority with the townships and a fire authority with the townships around us after thirty years of fighting, not getting along. Being trustees, you may be able to relate to that. Served six years in the legislature, served with, I left just as Dan Lowers was coming into the house. But just want to, my phone is there, my email is there. Feel free to call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming in. Any more public comments? Seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the board meeting of December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, which were placed in front of you tonight. I apologize, they weren't with your board packet. Check reports, the planning commission and zoning board of appeals meeting dates, parks and rec updates, and there were no requests.
Support. We have motion and support. Is there any more discussion on the consent agenda? Any of you have any questions? Okay, all in favor to support the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes. Next order of operation, we have the fire chiefs report. Chief Rose.
Good evening. Fire chiefs report for December. I didn't attend any meetings for the month, but I did go to Ocala, Florida to do the pre-build on the two new fire trucks. We did make a few changes on the vehicles, scene lighting, a front bumper and some paint. We should be getting those vehicles within twelve to fourteen months from December. December was a pretty busy month with the Down River Goodfellows. We started out with the paper sale, and then we did an FOP fundraiser at the Colony Bowl. Then we had a purchase for families for Goodfellows at Myers, and then we delivered the food baskets for the families in need. I'd like to thank Kristy Hilton and her family, Chris O'Regan and his family, Anita, Bonnie, Bev, Artie, Chief Coach, Lieutenant Stockwell, Chris, Dave, and Denise for their help with Goodfellows this year.
And Sherry.
And Sherry.
Yeah, with your Sherry's on there too.
Almost forgot you. Apologize. Ferry was shut down for a few days due to damage to the main dock or the dock on the mainland. Station two was manned and also was manned with an ALS unit on that side. I would like to thank Bill Hubert for his outstanding job at mitigating that scene, dealing with the ferry being down and also power lying down.
It was certainly an emergency scene, wasn't it?
Yep.
Live power down and the ferry smashed in. Yeah, it was certainly appreciative of our first responders.
Yep.
He represents us well, and that's not the first time, is it?
Nope.
Attaboy, Bill. Good job.
Thank you.
Chief, thanks for the report. Thanks for your help on the Goodfellows. Thanks for leading that up with Algonac. That's good. I believe you served food and/or gifts to over eighty-eight families, right?
Yes, and then out of that eighty, we have twenty-three that were here in the township, and then I think one was on the ALS.
Spectacular. Thank you. Moving forward, I'm looking at unfinished business. I do not believe we have any.
We do not.
All right. Next, we'll look at the new business. First order of new business, the BSNA software annual renewal in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the BSNA software annual renewal for nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars at a line one oh one, two six five, seven sixty.
Support.
We have motion and lots of support. Discussion on the BSNA renewal.
Yeah, on the renewal end of it, what model are we in to as far as the BSNA is concerned? Two, two-point-one, five-point-zero? Anybody know what it is?
We get an update every month.
Okay.
Or twice a month.
Does it come with a number?
Not that I am aware of, no.
Okay, let's, we can track. There was updates as we go along. Only because of the current political situation that we have in the country and with Iran. I think it's important that we make sure we have enough security in place.
Can we review just real quick what our BSNA software allows us to do as a township? It sort of integrates our departments, correct?
It's the module that we use for tracking for special assessments, utility billing, tax system, cemetery management, delinquent personal property tax, the general ledger, slash the budgeting system, accounts payable, and cash receiving. So all of those are individual modules that we go into, and they are all somewhat linked together. The building department is not listed on here for whatever reason. It comes at a separate time of year. So it's not part of this, but we do have a building department module as well. I think that was an add-on down the road. I don't think originally when they got the BSNA, we had, we didn't have a building department.
So it's an important, it's an important piece of software for our township and certainly something that's widely used across the state. And is it, is it a national program, BSNA, or is it a state run?
It's multi-state.
Multi-state?
Yeah.
Maybe like a region? It's just, it's a budgeted item, but it's really integral to what we do here as a township, right? The clerk uses it, the treasurer uses it, the building department uses it, our staff up front.
It's primarily designed for municipalities. A lot of, a good portion of them use the BSNA software. Not the only one, but definitely is one of the wider, wider used ones.
Yeah.
Well, it still could be hacked, right? That's my own point. Can still be hacked.
Oh, yeah.
Anything can be hacked.
Yeah, I don't disagree with, but we have both internal and external security measures in place to hopefully curtail or prevent that. I just wanted a little explanation on indeed what it was. It's a sizable line item, but you know, a very valuable piece of the puzzle for running this township.
That is updated and maintained on our server, so we're not, it's not cloud-based. You know, we keep that here in-house. So it's not like we're always transmitting back unless we're doing updates.
Well, with the updates, there's an open portal coming through. Okay.
So under new business, if we're good with the BSNA software, number two on the list is a board discussion on twenty-twenty goals.
We have motion and support. What do you have?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to open up the board discussion on twenty-twenty goals. Oh, we have to vote on them all. I'm sorry.
Cindy, Cindy motion, and Joanne and I second.
Okay, all in, well, that's a, that's a roll call vote.
All in favor on the BSNA.
Is that a roll call?
No, it's not. It's under ten.
It's under ten.
Oh, it's under ten? Okay, so all in favor of supporting the BSNA software annual renewal for nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, board discussion on twenty-twenty goals. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to open discussion on the Clay Township Board twenty-twenty goals.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
Hope so.
Hope so, yeah.
Artie had a few pieces on his goals. You want to do his last? Okay. I didn't, I didn't print them. So I'm going to, I'll look them up. How are we going to, how do you guys want to structure this? Do we want to, do we want to limit this? Do we want to keep everything that we brought into play today? Do you want to pick your top, your top four or five? Want to just open the floor up? Let's open the floor.
I mean, I don't think we need a whole lot of discussion. I think we should do this obviously when we have our supervisor, but I think we need to acquire a list in addition to what somebody else may have also already provided us. So that we can all in our own time, between this meeting and the next, kind of look into them a little bit more, some other people's ideas versus not just what we have.
I like it. And if we have items that we can agree on, maybe we can move those around in the, in the list and perhaps once we get a large list, we can help prioritize and sort of jump on it and attack it from that way.
I think we could open up, you know, get some thoughts in line and then take the, you know, take that away and go back and have a list on email, and then we can convene at the next meeting and see where we're at with the goals or at least pass those around at some point in time.
Yeah. I like that idea, Mark. Are you, are you prepared to get us started?
Well, obviously, the high water concerns, we need contingency plans in place, and that would involve obviously the emergency response team that we have as well. I mean, we have some plans in place, but what I would like to see is an SOP so we have some guides to follow based on the elevation of the water. Of course, the ferry is obviously a concern. Again, we need a contingency plan on the ferry if that were to go down again and so we can work off some type of operating procedure, basically. And again, we would need the owners of the ferry to buy in on that, as well as the current state police that are supposed to oversee that ferry operation. And I'm not really sure what they do or what they can do, so we need to get that in line. I've got some others here too, but we'll, we'll pass it on to Joanne if you don't mind.
Okay, here are some of my thoughts that I think we should, you know, are important. We need to continue to complete work on the master plan, keep that moving along. Look at some different ordinances that need to be updated, that are kind of out of date, and get the planning involved with that. And the way we might be able to do that is to have joint meeting like we did once before and get their input and keep them moving along. And then, because some of these ordinance need to be enforced. Doesn't do any good to have an ordinance if you can't enforce it, so we have to really look at that. And then another one, that the garbage down in the flats on Harsons Island, we, we had those cages we were going to buy for five, five of them or something. But that's kind of on hold because probably the high water. But I think we need to look into that so there's not garbage flying all around down there.
Well, we did pass the motion.
I know, but nothing's.
We approved those.
Yes, but did we get the cages, you know, pursue it and see?
Great question.
Yeah.
I think it got sidelined by our high water.
Yeah, yeah, and it did, yeah. What else? That's all that I have at this point.
So my, I would say my top two primary ones were to revisit our soil removal permit process. That drives me crazy every year. As well as Joanne and a few of you others, I believe. And absolutely I agree with Mark that we need to have a contingency plan in place for the ferry. So whether it's down for an hour, a day, a week, God forbid any longer, we already know what that plan is going to be and just put it in place instead of everybody sitting around saying, well, it's going to be up soon, it's going to be up soon. I mean, we, that, we just can't have that. There will be other alternatives that get stuck people on a minute's notice off of that island and their vehicles. Those are my top two concerns, but we'll see what everybody else says. I don't want to get too long here without.
Okay, those are two good ones. Yep. Kristy?
Anita and I are going to continue to push to collect delinquent personal property that went by the wayside for many years, and we made a big stride in twenty-nineteen to collect that and get it cleaned up. So we're going to continue to do that and take whatever measures we need to do to get that collected. I know that we spoke at budget time about new water meters, so I'd like to see that process get going. I think the building department and the water department need fee updates, fee schedule updates and revisions. I think we need to look into a security deposit ordinance for rental properties. We had at least one instance of a landlord that wants to make the township responsible for the collection of the water bill when a tenant leaves. So I believe that we need to have a security deposit ordinance.
So just to hit on that, I know last week John did have somebody out for the water meters, looking at our tower and doing some testing for spanning, so I know he is working on that, so that didn't go by the wayside. It's just a long process to get a couple of companies out here, but that's still moving forward. And the building fee updates will probably be in the next board packet, so that also has been moving along.
The building department?
Yes.
Fees?
Yes.
Fantastic. I listed a couple of things on here. One is our garbage service. I'd like to see some improvement in it, and perhaps that comes with renewal or replacement of our existing carrier, depending on how they respond. We get a lot of complaints, and when I say we, it's mostly, you know, the people that work in the office, and Kristy, and Cindy, and Artie, and when they have to constantly field complaints about our garbage, it takes their eye off of another project, which is, it can be very frustrating. So I would like to see, I would like to see some, some expansion of our community projects. I think we have a lot to offer in this township. Yes, we may be limited on our riverfront as far as public property. Clay Township owned property, but I think there's a lot of community programs that we can continue to strive on. Our fall festivals, our scarecrow festivals, our winter carnivals, you know, there's a lot of good things, the Sturgeon Festival. There's a lot of good things that this township does, and I'd like to make sure that we, we continue to offer those programs and perhaps explore a few more. High water is obviously a huge concern. Preserve and protect our infrastructure for both our residents and commercial property owners. This is going to be a huge deal this spring. It's going to be huge. We all know that. It's all coming. Pretty soon, the ground's going to be frozen up. Might be a good time to be proactive as far as berms, bringing sand into your property, doing whatever you need to do to protect your home and your business. The Starville Bridge Project, love to see that get taken care of sooner than later. It's a critical artery, paved artery into our township, and it looks like it's completely stalled out. The cranes have been pulled. There's nothing down there anymore other than a few cones, so it's, I'm sure there's a good explanation coming up from the county, and I hope that that project gets back underway shortly. Joanne, you hit it on the master plan. I think that's a big one. I think that's a really big one, and that's being spearheaded by a company we put in place, right? Giffles Webster? So as a board, I think it's up to all of us to keep them accountable.
To make a point on it, they attend all the planning commissions. They'll be here this twenty-second. We are planning at the planning commission at that level to have a joint meeting prior to implementing the master plan. So all of that is in place. They're, they're working on it. And Joanne's concern here with the ordinances, we've got some ordinances in there. They are going to be reviewing, and they're very important ordinances as well, so.
Great. Great. So they're, so far, they're doing what they said they were going to do. Well, that's spectacular. But I've sort of taken my eye off the ball, and I'm one of the people that put them in place. So personally, you know, I need to get, I need to get better at that. I need to get better at that. That's a big deal for our community moving forward. I think that's enough. Sandy?
Well, I think high water is probably going to be on all of our goals list. It's not a problem. It's going to be going away anytime soon. As much as we would think that everybody is aware of the effects of high water, there are probably many out there that are not. So I would like to see one of our goals being to educate our community a little bit better than it already is. We can't afford, I'm sure, to spend just as much in sand and sandbags as we did last year, and the problem's probably going to be twice as bad. So if we start early educating the community and its residents, we may be further ahead. And if we're not, at least we can say we gave it a great effort. Second, on my goals list is we have come strides, leaps, and bounds and improved our fire department great lengths. And I would like to see a cadet program moving along in that department. I know there's a lot of youth interested in that line of work, I guess, if that's what we call it. And that's, should be inspiring to us, that kids want to move into that direction, so I'd like to see a program like that at least come together with some vision and long-term goal. Third, on my list was working with neighboring governments and services. I think there are many opportunities to connect to the northern part of the county with organizations, and we can probably benefit from a lot of them, and if we open up some communication and start marketing and networking with those, we may see a couple items on our goals list move along a little faster.
Good points.
That's a good one.
Speaking of good points, I see you rapidly writing, are you gonna make lists for us?
Yes, I took down everybody's goals. Yeah, we'll do a nice little summary on it.
Very good.
But I, I will go ahead and add, Artie, I did print Artie's goals for the township. So, his yearly goals were to fix the sewer interceptor, tweak some of our ordinances, some of them just do not make sense, building zoning, update the garbage and water ordinance, codify our ordinances, and shore up as best we can for high water this year. Then he listed some fun stuff, 2020 goals. Secure and work with the county to develop a beachfront park property. Plan and develop the first stage of the Harson's Island Nature Park and kayak launch, which I'm looking forward to that also, that's gonna be fun. Finish the parking lot for the Pearl Beach fishing pier, work closely with our neighbors and share services where we can, Elginak, Iroh, schools. So, you and Artie were on the same page there, Sandy. Continue to build relationships with the county and state agencies. I think we have a wide list of things there that...
Lots of work.
A lot of them are easily doable, we just...
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is, is once we get these listed on our, our meeting minutes, we can start to circulate, review, prioritize, and hopefully start checking some of them off. Outstanding. Good discussion. Next order under new business, we have our police chief, chief coach, that wants to talk about some new vehicle equipment.
Well, where we're kind of sitting right now, is, you know, we, we placed an order for these vehicles back in June, and what has happened since then is Ford completely moved their plant for the Explorers, their Lincoln Aviators, and, as well as the, the wholesale end of the Explorers and the Interceptor utilities, which is what we purchase. And in doing so, everything that I'm reading and I'm being told, is that they pretty much bit off more than they could chew trying to do it all at once. They basically started from a new building, ground up, trained people on the outside of the building to do the functions that were gonna be day-to-day on the inside of the building, and things didn't go as planned. Once they did get up and operation, they ended up finding some issues, recall issues, things like that, vehicles that went out, vehicles came back. They became the first priority to get those things taken care of, as well as fix the problems in-house, which put things way back. So, vehicles that we probably should have gotten around August, here it is, first of the year, we still don't have them. I recently, at the end of this last week, spoke with our contact with the dealership, and he said that it appears that our vehicles are in the process of being built at this time, so we're trying to get ahead of things, but in doing so, find out that they did completely change everything with this model year as far as the, the tooling of these vehicles. And with that being said, most of the equipment that we have in them don't fit. So, that's always nice to hear after you do your budget. We started making some phone calls in different manufacturers that we use in, in the equipment that we have. For quite a bit of our equipment, we were able to find that these manufacturers were offering an up, outfit, different outfit brackets, and a hardware in order to make the equipment we got still functional. But, as anything else, it comes with a price. But, it's a third of the price as far as trying to replace everything. So, that's what we've been working on right now, but at the end of the day, we're still upwards on our vehicle equipment. Now, mind you, we still would have had vehicle equipment going into these, but it wouldn't have been near, you know, what we're looking at right now, we're looking upwards about $12,000 right now. I would have probably, I would think we would have been maybe $4,000. And I've been squeezing blood out of every rock I could find in order to make sure we could get this within budget. Basically, right now, it's just prioritize. What, what do we need above and beyond anything else, and that is, you know, first and foremost, safety for our officers. So, we've gotten that pretty much narrowed down, that's why I'm here before you today. A lot of these things that we're gonna have to get, these hardware conversion kits and things like that, are gonna take, could be four to six weeks for us to get them. So, I need to get on the ball to start getting these equipment coming in, so that's kind of where we sit right now. It's, we got pretty much caught by surprise in all this. When we ended up budgeting this year for these vehicles, there was no indication at that time whatsoever that there was gonna be a complete revamp into this vehicle. So, like everybody else, and believe me, I'm hearing it everywhere, everybody's being hit with the same exact problem. And it's, which, you know, it's tough on our guys, too, you know, obviously, you know, we do all our own outfitting in-house, so now something that would have, you know, taken us, you know, so long is gonna definitely take us longer now, because it's back to the drawing board. You know, it's not just a point of, you know, pull it from one, put it to another that you've already done three, four, or five times. Now, we're back to the drawing board again, so we gotta relearn it again on our own, but... But that being said, I mean, we save a lot of money doing that, so that's why we still do it ourselves. And knock on wood, we don't have the issues that I hear that other departments have with their vehicles and their fleet. So, that's kind of where we're sitting right now, just trying to get ahead of this the best we can and make the best of the situation. That's where we're at.
A huge credit to you and your department, Mike, for taking that on to do yourself, because that is a lot of work that we would pay out a lot of money for to somebody else.
Yeah, we've been doing them in-house for, well, since I've been here, over 20 years now.
Definitely makes, you know, more money available to your budget, but...
Yes, absolutely. And the guys work hard doing it. You know, trade, train the guys coming up that helped me out with this, and James, well, James Pelletier and Bill Cope, they've, they've really got it down pat now. They do a really good job. I mean, you gotta figure, when we get these vehicles, and it's, it's just a plain vehicle with nothing, we do everything from, you name it, wiring on, on up, as far as all the outfitting to it, so... But, at the end of the day, our vehicles, we don't, like I say, we don't have the problems that other ones that they have when they're trying to push these through as a mass production and that. We don't have these issues, so.
So, Mike, obviously, the $12,000 is an estimate.
Yes, that's, and, and that's at a max budget, and that's, mind you, that's with the, the graphic package that's included with that, the other items that we would normally purchase with it, but like I say, unfortunately, we're, we're quite a bit more this year because, because of that fact. I mean, usually, it's just a point of, you know, we're using the same equipment that we have in the vehicles right now, and now, that's, that's not possible, so.
Well, make sure the $12,000, you don't cut yourselves short. If we need to increase it, we can do it now, right?
We should be good. I, you know, we, we really, you know, crunched the numbers pretty hard, figuring out what we had to do, and I, I think we'll be okay.
What's the lead time, or the, the build time on those vehicles again?
Well, dealer told me that we couldn't see two of them as early as this week, but I'm not holding my breath on that. I've already been told that once already, so, and that's kind of where we're sitting right now. I can't come before the board with the, the final purchase price, anything with that, because I don't have that set in stone.
Are we in a critical stage right now with the current vehicles?
I can tell you, it really hurt us going into next year, I'm driving vehicles right now with 160,000 miles on them out there, and I don't like it.
They can break it anytime, right?
Yeah, and honestly, our vehicles with the least amount of miles, two vehicles that we're gonna keep driving have 100,000 miles on each of them. So, unfortunately, you know, what we try to do is, we try to get the, the first set of vehicles off the road between around 60,000 miles, somewhere in there, they become secondary vehicles, are used by part-time officers or special assignments and things like that, and allows us to kind of roll those vehicles in, getting the new ones in, and, and keep us from having to do a, a purchase every year. This really set us back. And it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, this one's gonna carry us over till next year, there's no doubt about it, just because of the amount of miles that we put on these vehicles, and, you know, and not only the miles, if you actually sit down and do the math and, and go the hours. I mean, we might have 160,000 miles on that vehicle, but you put the hours into that, there's well over 300,000 on that vehicle if you do the, do the math. But, you know, the guys have been great as far as upkeep on them, keeping an eye on everything, if there's a problem, we're right on top of it. So, and we're at the point right now that it's just, hopefully, you know, no, no major issues. Ford did say, however, that they are gonna give us a $750 credit per vehicle that we can use for either equipment or services at Ford after the fact, which, I said, "Good", I said, "Can I use that right now on these vehicles?"
Or our future purchase.
I never got an answer back on that. So, that's, that's kind of where we sit with that one. You know, I, I feel bad for the, the salesman that we've been, you know, I've been dealing with for several years, and he's just getting beat up. And, you know, it's not his fault, but, you know, he's the guy in between, and if you, if you get a chance to Google it and read it, you'll see everything that's going on here, and it's the way it really, really put Ford behind the eight ball in this one. But the thing is, you can't beat the vehicle. I never thought that you'd beat the Crown Victoria as far as how well the guys liked them out there, and these guys will tell you hands down, even the guys that have been through the Crown Victorias, the Caprices, everything, all these vehicles that were very good police cars, they'll tell you that they don't hold a candle to these Explorers, they love them. So, that's kind of where we sit with it, you know what I mean? They are good vehicles, and I will say, on some other vehicles that we've had, we wouldn't have hidden 160,000 miles with them. They would have been dead a long time ago. So, I gotta give some credit to these vehicles.
Just as a reminder, these vehicles, when we do buy them, are in a Michigan State...
State bid.
Yes.
Actually, we go by the Macomb County bid, you got a Macomb County bid, Oakland County bid, and state bid, and we usually, we go by whatever with the options that we get is gonna be the cheapest, so we go under the Michigan, or the Macomb County bid.
With that being said, and all that valuable information that you just gave us, I'll make the motion that we budget $12,000 from line item 207-000-799.01.
So, we have motion and support. It's over 10G, right?
Yep.
So, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Kristy Hillman, yes. Crystal Riger?
Yep.
Sandy Kuffel?
Yes.
Mark Fashine?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, chief?
Thank you.
You got your equipment?
I hope our fire chief has better luck with the new truck.
Hey, is this, is this going to be a supply and demand issue? Because you're not alone in this vote.
I think it's kind of, whatever your order was placed. As far as equipment goes, that's what I'm trying to get ahead of right now, because it seems like production's starting to hit out there.
Yeah.
And, so that's why when we, we called, we made our phone calls to the manufacturers of this equipment, and that doesn't sound, they're getting beat up too hard just yet. They're, they're getting prepared for it, so that's why I wanted to try to get ahead of this and then get moving right now, even if the cars aren't, if we don't get them just yet, at least we have the equipment sitting here for them, so.
So, you'll be on the phone tomorrow morning?
Yeah, absolutely.
Love it. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next we are to our board member comments. Let's start off with our clerk, Cindy Valentine.
I hope everybody had a safe and happy holidays, and we have a presidential primary coming up in March, so if you want an absentee ballot, you can call the office or send an email, clerk@claytownship.org, and we can make sure you're on the list for that absentee ballot coming up. We do not have the ballots yet, probably be about another four weeks or so before we actually get those. We're gearing up, and we're ready for another election.
Joanne?
I've, I've said all I need to say.
You're all set.
For this meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Mark?
I just want to repeat the planning commission next meeting is the 22nd. Again, we'll be discussing the Blue Horseshoe and other ordinances. And I want to thank Chief Rose for the stats on the fire department, fire and EMS, the total, it brings, to me, a lot of light to the situation that we're in as far as hours put in per man, per station, over a period of a month, and this is, I like to see stuff like this, that's really good. Thank you.
Kristy?
Happy New Year.
Fantastic. Sandy?
I was gonna wish everyone a Happy New Year, but she already did. Happy New Year, everybody. I would like to give kudos to both Chief Rose and Chief Coach for our job well done with the ferry being down. I heard very little complaints, it was all managed very well, and good job for you, because that was kind of an emergency situation that you acted promptly on, or your departments did. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did catch up to, I watched it online, and I also heard some review on that Wednesday meeting that you had, and that seemed to go over well, too, so that goes towards our educating the community, so I like that stuff.
It seems that we have the ear of Lansing, I don't know that we have the financial support that we're looking for, especially because the state of Michigan owns so much property in Clay Township. Obviously, it's gonna be really important to protect our properties this spring and to start early and go often. Give my best to Chief Rose, Chief Coach, and our DPW super John, and I hope Artie gets well soon.
We want to stay healthy, eat right, sleep right, bad flu season right now.
That being said, I will make one final motion to adjourn.
Support.
Lots of support. Good night, everybody.
Good night.